Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington for July 8th, 2025. Prior to the beginning of the business meeting, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Scott Rainey of Huntington First Church in the Nazarene, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi McElhany. Those who wish to participate may rise at this time.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you very thankful for your presence with us tonight. Lord, we recognize that you are here, that you see, you hear, you understand what's going on, you see things with clarity, and I pray, God, that you would give us eyes that would see and ears that would hear as well. Lord, I pray that in the end, that love would prevail, and that we would follow your direction in giving love to this world through Jesus Christ. And Lord, I pray that you'd be with our mayor and this council as they work through the challenges of change and experience the need for flexibility within our government. And I pray, Lord, that you would bless them as they do things to help this city to be successful, to be a place of peace, to be a place where we can grow and experience and live out all of freedoms that our country affords. And Lord, tonight, we're especially mindful of communities that hurt, and we think of Kerr County in Texas, knowing what it would be like to experience that kind of loss. And I pray, God, that you would be with those families, 100-plus families, that have lost loved ones, and that your grace would go to those families, and that the people of God would be caring and loving in such a way that people would see you through the tragedy. We love you, Lord, and we trust you today. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we'll call the business meeting to order, beginning with the roll call.
Brodigam.
President.
Chapman.
President.
Felton is absent. Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here.
Pike?
Present.
Renssberger?
Present.
Thank you. And having established a quorum for the conducting of city business, move along to consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting of June 10th, 2025. Is there a motion to bring the minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion and consideration of the minutes? Not seeing or hearing any at this time. We'll call the question in favor of approval of the minutes. Kristi?
Chapman?
Yes.
Funk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Renssberger?
Yes.
Brodigam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Moving along to reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie?
Met this morning with the dispatch board. As usual, things are always changing. That's the one common thing in life. They've added a dispatcher. They have another recruit that's promising, but they're still shorthanded. So if you know anybody that might be a promising dispatcher, have them get ahold of Tim Allen. We also talked about making the change from AT&amp;T to Indigital. That moves us from copper wire to fiber optics. That's going to be done August 5th. And that'll save us money every month, and it'll also improve our bandwidth. So that doesn't happen very often where you get better product for less money, but that's going to be happening 1st of August. We're also looking at changes in equipment, both for the phones and radios, and we're working through all of those things. There was a bit of a holdup on getting things quoted and estimated, but now that looks like the things that have happened with tariffs and that sort of thing, people are starting to get a better feel of getting quotes out to us. So we're going to be looking at migrating and making sure all the equipment's up to date. And then Motorola also is looking to go to a subscription-based model, which any of us that use software know that's how the world rolls. So no, it was a good meeting, and that's it from dispatch. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Paul?
Nothing here.
Dwight?
Nothing.
Todd?
Nothing here.
Andrew?
Nothing.
David? Okay. Not aware of any petitions or comments from citizens this evening? And no old business or new business. Under miscellaneous, our first item up is HK Porter update. Invite Director Kepner to come forward and provide that update to council.
Good evening. Yesterday, the Board of Works opened proposals from nine firms that were interested and submitted on demolishing the former HK Porter facility. As you know, we received in 2023 $991,000 from the federal government to aid in that for a brownfield cleanup grant. The proposal and the submission packets were quite thick due to the nature of the work and the complexity of it and the risks that are involved. We are still going through those bids as we speak with our partners at SME. But I can tell you that of the nine firms, the bids range from $629,997 to $2.178 million. So it is a wide range, and we will go through that and then hopefully make a recommendation to the Board of Works, consult with the Redevelopment Commission on funding and those sort of things, and then keep you guys updated just so. All indications are, we are still on track to get that building down by the end of the year. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Bren. Kristi, Budget and Financial's report.
Yes. We did receive June settlement, the general fund. In property tax, we received $3,385,000. Our ending balance for the general fund as of June 30th was $10,983,000. MVH, we received $61,000 for property tax, and the MVH regular fund ended at 1.9, and the MVH restricted fund is $724,000 ending balance. The park fund, we received $463,000 in property tax, and the ending balance is $345,000 as of June 30th. Airport, $154,000, and their ending balance as of June 30th, $221,000. And then landfill, we received $89,000, and the general, or the ending balance is $110,000. All of our funds are in good order and in good shape, and they're, the departments are currently working on 2026 budget. The C-DIT fund, we spent $104,000 in June, and the, so far year-to-date, we've spent $524,680 in C-DIT monies. The five-year plan is from 2024 to 2028 is still on track. And then I gave you a community foundation report for the opioid funds, those that came today. So I put that in on the desk for you. If you have any specific questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Kristi on financials? Okay. Thank you, Kristi. Next item, by way of updates under miscellaneous, is a follow-up to the presentation from Eric Doden and Pago USA, the previous council meeting. In the meantime, there is a, the local entity for that that would be named Flint Creek Redevelopment LLC. Does have a potential list and roster of board members that were identified at the previous meeting. Counsel heard from a number of them, but again, that roster would be Joel Buzzard, Matt Wilcox, Sonya Foraker, Rick Baker, and Jim Shiber, along with additional ambassadors or advocates of March Heiner and Ryan Warner. Mike is going to detail a little bit of how that structure could look. Based on council's direction, we did some more research on how it might look for the city to make, for lack of a better phrase, an investment loan into this to help with the initial seed capital. The ask on that would be about $2 million, and the potential term would be up to council, but we can bring back the formal documents with that. But I'm going to hand things over to Mr. Hartburg to talk through the structure at a high level on what that might look like.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. When Indiana cities like Huntington use their economic development commission in accordance with 36, 7, 12, that city has the authority to provide direct grants and loans to users and developers. A nice economic tool uses the city's already existing economic development commission. Here, the EDC would hold a public hearing on the proposed project and then make a recommendation back to council. Council would, if it receives a favorable recommendation from the EDC, council could adopt a loan ordinance. That ordinance would authorize the issuance of a promissory note. That would be the note from the city to the Flint Creek Redevelopment LLC. The note, and this is where the mayor alluded to, the terms being on council's terms, the note can be amateurized, or it can be a forgivable loan. It's up to council. Typically, if it's a forgivable loan, the forgiveness is based on the occurrence of certain benchmarks, like you sell so many properties or acquire so many properties. But those are determinations that council makes. So I think the notion would be that depending on how your discussion goes from here, we would assemble the paperwork and share it with you next time around.
Thank you, Mr. Hartburg. So with that, council members, you've had a chance since the last meeting to think a little bit more about the proposal and the pitch, and we would just like a little bit of direction on whether to proceed with moving forward through the EDC to bring a proposal back to you, or where you would like to go with this. So I'd welcome council's discussion.
I just have a question to start. So are there other municipalities that have done this kind of thing that serve as sort of a model for this in Indiana, under the statute that Mr. Hartburg cited?
Well, as far as EDC, yes, that's a very fairly common municipal tool. As far as this focus and utilization of an EDC, I know that Eric had mentioned a couple communities when he was here, but I'm not familiar enough to be able to recite those off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think the city has used its EDC for these types of arrangements previously. The one that comes to mind is the landfill closure. Sorry, I couldn't hold that. The other, the other option, no, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought.
I think the presentation he made was for Van Wert to do this, and Van-
Van Wert, Ohio, and Hillsdale, Michigan are two that I know that they're working with and working on this. But you'd mentioned specifically in Indiana, and I can't recall.
Right. I thought he said Manchester. Presentation. It's just recently they did Manchester, and it was in the middle stages of it or something. That's, I mean, I've slept since then, but I was thinking he said North Manchester is what, where he was, if I remember right.
I'll check and get those to you.
So, and remind me, as Flint Creek Redevelopment would acquire properties, they would retain management of those properties, and the properties then would be updated, remodeled, what have you, and then leased out for use. And then as they're being leased for use, Flint Creek would be receiving income. And I guess the point I would make is, the note, if the city floats a note to this corporation, I think it would be good that that note be repaid as, as the redevelopment corporation is earning income. And I think that's, I wouldn't want to set any, you know, say you had to have it paid back in a certain amount of time, but I think if some sort of structure could be made so that there's the expectation that eventually that note would be paid, is something I would like to see built into the proposal.
Well, we'll think it'd be a good idea to put a maturity date on it. That way, like, everyone's on the same page, everyone's in the same room. You can have a schedule of payments. You can even do annual payments. You can do a single payment, however you want to do it, as long as everyone's on the same page. I, the one thing that probably concerns me the most is like, we haven't really seen any projections on like how they're going, or cash flow statements, how they're going to receive their income, and how we're going to get repaid back. I understand, like, this is really new. The previous cities who have done this, I don't think that there's any government involvement, if I recall correctly in the presentation. So this is, like, we really would be a first, and we may not have anyone to look at. But for them to really get $2 million without showing how we're going to get paid back, assuming we'd sign a note, I mean, that's kind of scary for me from a financial perspective that I work with every day. Also, like securities, you know, I'm assuming that there's not any capital, except for us, we'd be the first ones in, which is kind of a big risk. So I would like to try to get some sort of a security, whether that's a first rights or, you know, a first lien position on buildings in case of repayment or something like that. And then as far as interest rates, I mean, I'm not above giving them below a market rate, but I also don't want to, as risky as this is, I want to make sure that we get the return on our investment as well.
Do we have any representation with the Flint people? If I missed it, is there somebody from our, from the council with that, or is it?
It's a separate entity.
Separate nonprofit.
I, I guess where I was getting that is the projects that will be started with that money will come past us, or we're just at the beginning of basically doing an ordinance for the note for the loan?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, would be the first.
And, and Mike, I guess this, any sort of proposal that we come up with would be structured in negotiation between the administration and this not-for-profit group. Because I have, another question I would have is about the acquisition of property, okay? What's paid, what's, you know, how much is a piece of property worth? Because my fear would be if parcel owners downtown see, oh, hey, there's a $2 million pile of money here. You know, last week I was offering X for a property. Now I can offer, maybe put it on the market for X times two. I just, I don't know how we would take an appraisal for a property and pay, be able to pay fairly for that property. Both, both for our sake and for the sake, I don't want to see a windfall of property owners, and I'd like to see, see us taken care of. And I don't, yeah, I know that's not going to probably happen based on the presentation we saw, but I don't know if that's something to think about.
Yeah, and I think that's the key with, and again, we're using, we would be, that group would be using private dollars to hire the consulting services of property developers and folks that do those transactions on a daily basis, and they would be the ones handling those negotiations to make sure that they're making what they think is a fair deal. And of course, every property owner has the right to refuse or demand a high amount, or what we might think is a high amount. You know, we, we see that every day in Huntington already. We have several properties that some of us are surprised at what they're listed for, and we wish them the best. And if somebody buys it for them at that price, then God bless America.
I think I'm rolling along with Andrew with the, I'm going to call it the contract and what that says and those types of things, or what, how it's written up is to be beneficial for us to make sure we have all our Ts crossed, our Is dotted for Is. It sounds like it's going to be a pretty huge document to make sure it's covered.
No, I don't even, I think if we're going to talk about this, Mr. Raketa should be here to answer the questions we have. I mean, even though he did the presentation-
Mr. Doden.
Eric, Eric, sorry. Doden.
Mr. Raketa is the one who demands answers to his questions.
That's true. But I think the people that are presenting it, or even the group that understands it better, should be here to answer any questions we have, because right now, we're just, we're kind of flying blind right here, right now. We're telling concerns, but they should be here to answer those concerns. If we're, if we're going to talk about it in a serious way and answer why, you know, what, are we the first one to put up the money? You know, what, where did it work otherwise? Tell us what happened. They should be here if we're going to talk about this.
Well, and, and they will be here when we're actually talking about a formal proposal.
So they're just asking for input?
Right, right now, the administration is asking council for further thoughts on how to actually handle this, because any negotiations that occur need to reflect council's concerns and looking out for taxpayer dollars on this.
I'll jump in and say, I mean, I think the idea is great. I think there's a lot of potential. At the same time, I want to structure any note so that the taxpayers are protected, but also that we're not the only investor. I guess I'd want to see some, some pretty clear commitments from other sources. You mentioned private dollars for different things. I want to know we're not the only partner, or have no partners. You know, I'd prefer the city's note to be a small percentage of the total, right? And they, they need to be able to deliver, and based on what happened in Van Wert and other places, that, you know, that, the talk is good, but I want to see the hard numbers. When, when the, when the city commits, I want to see other commitments on the table. I don't know how you structure that in a contract, but I'd like to see that reflected in some way. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but that's my thought.
Yeah, it'd be good to see who else has skin in the game. But I agree with Dwight. I think it's, Eric presented a unique opportunity that I think can, over time, prove to, to do a lot for developing the downtown area, because a lot of things have happened for decades. It seems like we're still looking at the same issues. Can't seem to get downtown developed very well. Put in a walking mall, and then we take it out, and we move things around. Not had any sustained success, and I think this proposal offers some forethought to that possibility of having something.
Okay. So just to read back what I heard from council and make sure I've caught it, it sounds like council's preference between a forgivable loan or an amortized loan would be an amortized loan with a maturity date. Get an identity or list of other Indiana communities that are also looking at this, but also find out more from the business model in Van Wert on how the cash flows actually work for repayment. In negotiations, make sure that there's security there, whether it's first rights or liens, which I think that would be the answer if things go belly up, is that you would have the assets to be sold off, which is why negotiations on the front end are so important. We did not talk about a rate, but we can have that conversation later, and that the private capital that's already identified, because remember from the presentation, a good amount of this was federal and state tax credit programs. That's identified, but it's not secured, and the point is to get that initial seed money so you can go out and secure them then. But I think they can detail that out further on what that looks like. And my understanding as well is that the community foundation is looking at investment alongside, so that would be one of the initial private capitals.
So maybe a timeline for that part would be helpful. What, what's the expected timeline from the time the city money becomes available to these tax credits showing up, for example? That's a process that should be predictable somewhat.
Further detail than the timeline that was in the presentation, or?
Well, yeah, specifically from the city's interest. The, the presentation had, it had a timeline for the project, right? But I don't remember. What I'd like to see is a little more detail in that timeline about, okay, so here's, here's $2 million from the city. How many weeks or months is it until those state and federal tax credits are leveraged, right? Because this is, you use the term seed money. Seed money means growth somewhere. Seed, you get something. How long does it take for the seeds to produce?
Okay. I think so. Anything else, or anything that I didn't get accurately?
Okay. One last thing. I think personally, I think I'd rather like to see some sort of, even if that's just interest only. I mean, that's negotiable, obviously, but just to make sure that things are coming back, or things are moving forward appropriately. Depending on how everything else looks, I, you know, that's negotiable. Maybe that'd be my preference.
Anything else from council on that? Good. Thank you. We'll proceed with conversations with Pago and Flint Creek Redevelopment and, and the EDC, and look to bring back a proposal and more information to council. Next item on the agenda, and to underscore the importance of making investments in growth in our city, we do have Eric Reedy and Tim Stricker from Reed Financial here to present to us on Senate Enrolled Act I and its impact on the City of Huntington and other units of government in Huntington County. So gentlemen, thanks for being here with us tonight. They have a presentation. Should be able to pull that up if we've got it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Eric Reedy with Reedy Financial Group. We have offices in Seymour, Indiana, and the north side of Indianapolis, Keystone at the Crossing. I've been doing this for 32 years now. Went through the Circuit Breaker Law back in 2008. This is a very far-reaching bill. It eliminates your current income tax system for local government, and it changes property tax as well. Currently, property tax is probably 60 to 65%, maybe higher, of your operating revenue. Income tax might be, you know, 30% or so. That's going to get more even under this system. Income tax will be higher. Property tax will be lower with Senate Enrolled Act number one. Tim, I'm on the stage, the, so the, the person that, that set me up here said, don't turn towards the, the screen too much, or, or my voice will wander. So I'm going to have Tim work that, and I'm just going to read off the PowerPoint itself that's in front of me. So this is the current- So this is the current law, and this is local income tax. And it goes away under Senate Enrolled Act in 2028. Lit rates set by county council, because you're a former Cagit County, you can do up to a 2.5% expenditure rate. The total cap is 3.75. The difference there is for property tax relief. Note, it's important to note going through here that no county levies that full amount. The highest is 3%. Randolph County, the average is about 1.6. Huntington County's current rate is 1.95. Of that, certified shares, which goes into your general fund, is 1.12%. Public safety, that funds police and fire and has its own fund, is 0.35%. Economic development, which goes into its own fund, economic development, 0.25%. And then, the, the city doesn't receive any of the jail. That goes to the county. And then EMS rate of 0.03, the city does not receive that either. City's 2025 certified lit is 7,554,895. So that's the current lay of the land of, of what lit currently looks like. Next page. So this is what lit looks like with Senate Enrolled Act Number One. Again, what you have now goes away. It's gone. So you're not gonna have certified shares going into the general fund anymore. You're not gonna have public safety going into the public safety fund, or economic development income tax going into the economic development fund. That, that all is gone. In its place, the county, so the county and the city will have its own rates. The counties can enact up to a 1.2% rate. That's done by the fiscal body of the county. There's a special fire protection EMS rate. Notice it's not all public safety. It's just specific to fire and EMS, of 0.4%. And we'll get into this one a little bit more later. But that's also adopted by the fiscal body of, of the county, of which you would be a major player. And, and under this system, you want, you, you'll, you'll need that. So keep that in mind as we work through this. Non-municipal civil taxing unit, so this rate basically would go to the townships, the libraries, folks like that. But nowhere in, in this lit structure does it mention schools. So keep that in mind, that schools aren't going to get any relief from Senate Enrolled Act Number One. And, and I think, as the mayor said earlier, we're gonna show you what the county impact is as well, and the school impact. There's a distinction between small cities and towns and large cities and towns. And, and why that's important is, is the large ones, which is defined as any city or town over 3,500, fiscal body gets to adopt the rate of, of up to 1.2%. If you're under 3,500, the county council adopts your rate. So that's the current law of the land. So I would like to mention that the, the initial projections that we've done statewide shows that about 80% of cities and towns will have a deficit situation under Senate Enrolled Act Number One, meaning they'll receive less revenue. And it's all over the board as far as, you know, how big those deficits are. 20% will have roughly a surplus. So there are some winners, mainly, mainly losers under this system. But on the flip side, nearly 90% of counties will see a surplus under this new system. And, and then only 10% would see a deficit situation. Not, not to ruin what I'm gonna do later, but Huntington County would be in a surplus situation. Next page. Some of the key takeaways so far. Much more county control. Countywide lit rates no longer set by the lit council. City can control its 1.2% rate that we showed you on the prior page. So again, the city council will adopt that rate. And, I don't know, Tim, do we get into, sorry for turning. But the, the city council actually has to adopt that rate every year. So that's an interesting nuance to this law that organizations such as the mayor and I belong, well, you guys belong to it too, AIM and others, are gonna lobby for that not, not to be the case because there's a bunch of legal ramifications to that. So there's a bunch of things I, I should say right off the bat that, that needs to change with this bill. But right now, I'm just giving you the impacts of, of what things look like currently. The 0.4% fire protection EMS, again, I said earlier, and you'll see on, in, in a couple of slides, Huntington City needs that. So keep that in mind, that the 0.4% rate, you're, you're gonna want, but the county controls that. You do not have control of that rate. The lit rate right now of 1.95, that's assessed to the whole county, no longer applies. It, it just goes away. And again, 2028 is the year that that happens. So you will want to, under this new system, you'll want to pass your new lit rates probably early in 2027. But we'll, we'll get guidance on that, but that's, that's what, what we, we think will happen. Under number four, it's very important to note that currently, there are only four counties in the state of Indiana where the Department of Revenue knows jurisdictional income tax bases. So that's very important. Huntington's not one of them, by the way. So we have no idea what, you know, the city of Huntington's income tax base is. So how can you possibly make a decision? I, I'm gonna give you a projection here in a minute. That's probably pretty good. But we, we don't know what the income tax base is. We know that one of those counties that, that knows theirs is Hamilton. Hamilton is, is favored very well in, in this, in this bill. How will lit certifications work moving forward? What happens to the existing lit trust balances? One of the things, Mayor, I, I don't know your, your finances well enough, but do you receive special distributions from lit? Under the new bill, we talked about this today during the Senate Bill One Task Force. We don't know if the, the counties will keep their individual trust accounts, which is how you receive your special distributions. So that, that's another big thing that we're, we're looking at. Tim, do you wanna advance it by one? So I, I'd already gone over this earlier, but you can see it in, in a graph format. So again, we've looked at all 92 counties and all cities and towns in the state, and we find that to the left are counties, and if it's blue, it means, under the new bill, they'll have a surplus. So 81 of the 11, or 81 of the 92 counties, we project will have a surplus under this new structure. Cities and towns, not nearly the same. 432 will actually have a deficit. Only 89 will have a surplus under this, under this current structure. Tim, do you wanna, yeah, you already advanced it. What we've done is, we've looked at every parcel in Huntington County. I mean, that's the only way that you can see the true impact, and it's, it's a massive Excel database. And we can tell you that there's 26,752 parcels. And from that, we're gonna tell you what, what some of the changes to assess values will be. So one of the things that the bill did is it increased deductions to assess value. So what does that do? Well, it lowers your tax base for property taxes. And it also increases credits that people will receive to reduce their property tax bills. So again, less property tax, more income taxes, is really the theme of, of Senate Bill One. 1% residential properties in red. City is projected to lose roughly 121.74 million in net assessed value under Senate Enrolled Act One at full implementations of, of all the deductions. And we'll go over that on the next page, how that works. 2%, which is multifamily. Out in the county, it's ag, ag parcels as well. Basically, anything that's non-home, yeah, non-homestead on the residential side. 47.91 million dollar reduction in assessed value on the 2%. On the 3%, which is basically commercial industrial, we project you, you would lose 65.87 million. So that's a, a pretty significant loss in, in assessed valuation when you add all those three together. General thoughts, if overall net assessed value growth does not outpace the expected 4% annual maximum levy growth, which is the current law of the land, certified tax rates would go up. The only way to avoid this would be through assessment growth or cutting of the tax levy. Obviously not recommended. New residential tax credit, so the credits were, were added literally in the 11th hour of this bill because they pretty much figured out that homeowners weren't gonna receive any relief for property taxes. So they threw in these credits, and these credits are unfunded, meaning, you know, you just don't receive revenue replacement. So on, on homesteads, the 1% properties will see a tax credit of up to $300 a year. I believe it's 10% of the assessed value, or it caps at $300 a year. So when we show you the impacts of the bill here in a little bit, what, what we showed you above is just reduction to the assessed value. We're gonna show you the impacts to the revenue here in a moment. Like I say, at, at the bottom, impacts to the projections to follow. Senate Enrolled Act One summary, so as I said, the big deal here is deductions to assessed values are going up significantly. Under the current structure, so let's look at 2025, there's two homestead deductions. One's the, the old homestead, and one's the supplemental. What's going to happen is, is if you look at 2030 and 31, by 2030, the old homestead deduction goes away. So right now, you get $48,000, goes to zero. In its place, the supplemental deduction increases from 40% to 66.7%. So it's a big increase in, in the supplemental deduction. The higher the value of the home, the more deduction you're gonna get, is how that works. 2% properties have never had a deduction. They're gonna have a deduction now of 33.4% when this is fully implemented. And going back to that prior page, Tim, can you do that real quick? This is why what's in red is, is there. So the 33.4% deduction for 2% is what's driving, for example, that $48 million reduction in net assessed value for the 2% properties. Tim, can you go to the next page? That one. So other property tax impacts. Again, the homestead, so after the tax bill is computed and you have your gross tax bill, you could have credits that reduces that. That's what the bottom right-hand portion that says other property tax impacts. So there's a homestead, which is 10% up to $300 of the tax bill. Over 65, $150. Blind and disabled, $125. Remove several old deductions. And right now, as, as we said a little bit ago, the growth quotient, which grows your max levy, is 4%. We also believe that there's going to be a push for Indiana to change its property tax system further. But that's not in Senate Bill One, so we won't go there at this point. Next page. So net assessed values, so this just summarizes what we've put on paper in, in red two pages ago. Net assessed value projection, so in 2026, under the current system, the city's net assessed value, your tax base, about 701 million. In 2032, if we still had the current system, we would expect it to be about 947 million. Senate Enrolled Act One, though, would limit that number to 711 million. So that's what the impact of all these deductions that we went over the prior few pages, how, how we projected that information. Tax rates are on the next page. And if you have deduction decreases, if your assessed value is going to decrease, then, and, and your levy, you know, increases somewhat, what's that going, that, that's gonna produce tax rate increases. So in order for us to properly evaluate what's gonna happen on the property tax revenue side, we have to look at tax rates. Under the current system, we project a, a $3.78 rate next year. Under the current system in 2032, a $3.46 rate under SCA One in 2032. That would be a $4.53 rate, and I don't know if you wanna get into the circuit breaker, but where the impact is, is through these new credits and through the existing circuit breaker. The circuit breaker doesn't go away. For those that don't know, that, an easy illustration is a 1% property is a homestead. If it's $100,000, assessed value home, 1%, 1,000. Your tax bill can't go over 1,000. If it does, a circuit breaker credit kicks in. And let's say it's $200. Well, whatever the city's rate is divided by the tax and district rate, you would actually, you would have to fund that portion of the rate. The county would fund its portion, the schools, so on and so forth. That's how the circuit breaker works. It's still here. It doesn't go away with Senate Enrolled Act One. It's actually in the state constitution now. It's not really going anywhere. Tim, next page. So this is really where the rubber meets, meets the road. So Senate Enrolled Act One, it does have an impact on property taxes next year. So this page is property taxes, as it says in the upper left-hand corner. And, and this is caused by these credits that we talked about earlier for homestead, blind and disabled, folks over 65. Those all kick in next year. Those don't wait. So all the credits kick in next year, and again, we did the parcel-by-parcel analysis, and we can tell you that that's gonna cost about $413,000 to the city next year. When this bill fully gets implemented in 2032, property taxes will be about 1.753 million less than where they are today. So remember, I said that 80-some percent of cities and towns are, are in a deficit situation, so this is driving that deficit. I can tell you too that there are cities that are much worse off. There, there are obviously some that have surpluses, but, you know, we wanted to share with you what, what your situation looks like right now. The next page is, is what Senate Enrolled Act One is doing on a homestead. And what we have here, it's, it's a tax bill, and the important number here is, is the $192. The $192 is a savings. So the average taxpayer on property tax would save $192, but that's not all the story because income taxes will more than likely wipe all that out and then some. So we're getting ready to talk about income tax as well. So the next page is, is income tax projections. And we really have this split into two timeframes. The first three columns is 2025. The last three columns are 2028. And what I'd like to focus on are the last three columns. So this is, this is why it's so important that the, the public safety tax is implemented. So currently, under the current system, that's what the... So under the current system, we project that you would receive, the city only, would receive $8,255,437 in 2028 from your three income taxes, certified shares, public safety, and economic development. There are two new lit, that, that all goes away. You, you won't receive it in 2028. It's gone. In 2028, going back to the page where you showed you the new lits, there's two that are applicable to the city. The first is, is under your control. That's the 1.2% that the city can receive. We project that that'll generate $4,826,000. And then the orange is the fire EMS. And then the orange is the fire EMS. So if the county, remember, the county controls that rate. So if the county adopts the 0.4% fire EMS, we project that you would receive a total between the two of $8,394, $844. So you would be slightly ahead of what you would, what we would project under the current system, the difference between the $8,394 and the $8,255. But remember, you have a property tax loss that you have to absorb that we showed you One thing I'd like to draw to the point is the very last bullet point to the right. Remember when I said the property tax folks would receive a decrease of $192? But if the full LIT rate is implemented, which could be 2.9% under this new system, the average household income of $60,888 in the city of Huntington, per census data and things of that nature, would be an increase of $469. So you would net the 192 against that, so it would be a $277 increase is what Senate Bill 1 is doing overall.
Sure. On the fire and EMS, the county decides the rate for that, correct?
Correct.
But the county does not decide how it's divided?
Yeah. It's in the statute. I'm going to show you that here in a minute.
Okay, sorry. I'm ahead.
Sure. Actually, in the next page. So this is the formula for the distribution of that 0.4%. And it's pretty wonky. There's two steps. So the first step is population. So the city of Huntington, your last census, 17,022. The only other folks that would participate in that currently are the smaller towns. In other counties, they have what's called fire districts and fire territories. Currently, it's rather interesting that you don't have any because they're very, very popular throughout the state. They would participate in this. But you don't have it, so that's a good thing on the sharing of this 0.4% rate because you would get the lion's share of it. So the first step is population. The second step is interesting because for whatever reason, the General Assembly added square mileage. So Huntington is 9.443 miles. The step after that is, for whatever reason, you multiply that times 20. Why? Nobody knows. This bill was put together by like four or five different people, and it was put together behind a closed door, and the General Assembly members were told to pass it, and they did. So this is one of the things we want to find out. This really doesn't impact Huntington that much, but if there was a fire district thrown in here or a fire territory and it covered lots of square mileage, this could really, really change the formula. So to conclude, what you do to figure it out is you take step one and you take step three to get to step four, and then you get a percentage, and your percentage is 76.6% of that revenue. So the 0.4, your 76.6% is $3,265, is what the 0.4 would generate. Again, if there was a county, you know, fire district or territory, that would skew these numbers. And we found in one county down in southern Indiana that they have a countywide fire district in the unincorporated area, and it threw, it's a county that has one major city like here, and it threw an extra $500,000 to that countywide fire district. So just telling you what's out there. So the next page is the combined impact by year. So for 2026, I'll just focus on that box at the bottom. For 2026, the only impacted for 26 is going to be property tax, the $413,000, and that's just the credits that are coming into play there. And then all the deductions don't come online until 2030, '31? Neck of the woods? Yeah, '31. So you're not going to see your final impact until about 2032. And when we combine the property tax impact to the LIT impact, it's about $1,596,000 in We've seen much worse impacts, but this is the city of Huntington. Big disclaimer here would be that the county would adopt the 0.4%. That's going to be about $3.5 million. I mean, that would just add to that 1.596 if they don't do it. That's one of the things that like AIM is looking at is, you know, can you have local control over your own public safety, of your own fire EMS? Because it's not, it's not, police aren't included in that number. So that's a big deal on that thing. But the $1,596, that would be the impact for the city of Huntingburg operating budget. I've seen much worse. Unfortunately, it's not a surplus situation. Next page. So there was a highway funding bill. I don't know if Huntington uses CCMG much. Do you? Okay. You know, CCMG right now, for the last, what, Tim, two years, the max has been 1.5 million. Before that, it was a million. And how that works is you match a million, the state gives you a million. Or, you know, for the last couple of years, it's been a million and a half, you know, so two 1.5s is 3 million. They're really going to restrict what's available for CCMG with this biennium budget. First kicker on this thing, and I don't know how the General Assembly, you know, made such a big push for Indianapolis, but for whatever reason, Indianapolis can get the first 50 million of the money that's available. They have to develop a plan on an annual basis, but why wouldn't they? So just something to keep an eye on. And then after that, there's going to be $100 million available for CCMG where you don't have to have the wheel tax. But as I put down below, if the max is 1.5 million and, you know, they max that out, that's only 66 units receiving that. So that's a very small number. In 2025, we project that between 200 and 215 million is available statewide for CCMG. Any amount left over after that, so if Indy gets the 50 million and the 100 million's distributed, any amount over that, you'd have to have the wheel and cert tax to be eligible for the amount that's over. Defines responsibilities for bridge work. Here's another interesting part of this bill is townships to subsidize a percentage of road improvement. So the General Assembly sees that townships typically are holding on to lots of unrestricted money around the state. So townships must create a fund dedicated to road and infrastructure improvements. 30% of the township's unrestricted funds must be transferred. These funds are to be used in partnership with counties, cities, and towns to support infrastructure projects. So that's part of this bill as well. I'm sure you've all heard that NDOT can request waivers to the federal government to potentially toll interstates. That's part of that as well. TIF, the big things here on your TIF, what the bill looked at mainly was personal property. And what it did is it increased the de minimis amount from 80,000 to 2 million, so it really increased that. I noticed that as a percent of your total TIF AV, personal property is only 3.2%, so you really don't have that much exposure. So it's not going to impact your TIF that much. Removal of the 30% depreciation floor on new assets after 2025. Neutralizations will be a big thing, but that's probably something that we don't need to chat about in this setting. I can do it individually if you like, but it's cumbersome. So that's pretty much it for TIF, Tim. Debt. There's a lot going on with debt with Senate Enrolled Act 1. We've just highlighted some of it. We could probably do a whole hour on what Senate Enrolled Act 1 is doing to debt. Adds additional layer of the definition to a controlled project. Projects may be subject to petition remonstrance and/or referendum even if previously exempt. I don't know if Huntington has had much exposure to either, probably not referendum, I'm sure. Controlled project, some cities have exposure to it, most don't.
We try to avoid it.
Yep, yep. Creates limitation on issuance of short-term general obligation bonds. So in my 32 years of doing this, there's one city in Hamilton County that pretty much drives legislation to kind of get folks back to where they should be because they get way too over their skis. But anyway, what these folks have done, and there's not many cities around the state that do this, but it's the really fast-growing ones that issue debt just to maintain a level tax rate. And what the state is doing here with this second bullet point is, is they're saying that if you, because we know some folks that do like one-year bonds, just issue a bond for one year just to level a tax rate. Imagine that. So what the state is saying is if you have a bond of five years or less, and these are just property tax. There's a one-year cooling off period. You have to wait one year from the time they pay off until you issue another one. So they don't want you to maintain that rate, is what they're trying to do. Also restricts pledging of LIT revenues for debt service to 25%. So that's a general rule there. So earlier, I said we'd also looked at the county and the school. Huntington County is like 90% of the other counties where we project them to surplus. And if you look in the 2032 column, the third number down, we're projecting a surplus of 6.4 million for Huntington County. There's some shenanigans that could go on that I don't really want to go into that would grow that number even more. I think it's too early in the game really to talk about that at this point. Bottom line, Huntington County is going to be in a surplus situation. I would say that, we talked about this this afternoon with AIM, that most cities need more than 1.2%. So hopefully, that will get put into a bill, and most counties need way less than 1%. So there's a city that we know of that's kind of, we think that's driving the rate, and they so happen to have needed 1.2%. And I think they just married the county to the city rate for whatever reason. So I think that's what's happening there. So we'll find that out. But county's in good shape. I would tell you that, we're getting ready to look at the school. They're in the exact opposite situation. So the county is a surplus of 6.4 million, the school is a deficit of 6.3 million. Now, the school is getting no income tax replacement for the property tax relief. So they're not getting any income tax. We feel that, remember the page before, I said the counties can play some shenanigans. We think that there's a way for counties to get schools money, but it would be like an interlocal agreement. Don't know if it'll happen. But it's interesting, particularly in your case. You got a countywide school, obviously the county's countywide. One's surplus of 6.4 million, the other one's a deficit of 6.3 million. Interesting how those numbers played out. And remember, we did a parcel-by-parcel analysis, so we're pretty good on the property tax impacts. I would tell you that because the Department of Revenue does not have income tax data for but four counties for jurisdictions, that's going to be very hard for folks like you to make, you know, decisions that you're going to have to make. So that's something that the state needs to actively fix. And like I said, you're going to want to pass what you're going to do sometime early in 2027. So any fixes need to happen next year. We heard Representative Thompson, who's the chairman of House Ways and Means, he's one of the drafters of the bill, one of the four or five, say that, hey, we've got two years to fix this thing. He just kept saying, two years to fix it. Well, not really. We need you to fix it next year because it needs to be passed, whatever you're going to do, early the following year. Food for thought. That wraps up my presentation.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tim. Council members, questions? Become bearing gifts and happy news this evening.
Just bear all the laughs. You're usually got the good, you've got the good questions, Todd.
He went through a lot of information. How does this affect Huntington Township then? Fire department? Because they're not city, correct?
You haven't done any analysis on the township numbers for us, right?
We would, we have it. We can share it with you.
Okay.
So we just didn't put it in the report. Be happy to send it to you.
Townships generally, though, potentially become a piggy bank that can be raided for any...
On the 1461 on the road funding.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can access 30% of their unrestricted money. So that'll be an interesting exercise to go through and see, you know, what happens.
In terms of unrestricted with that, I mean, would that, how would they categorize that? I mean, if it's in their fire levy, if it's in their poor relief or in recreation, those would be restricted. But if it's in the rainy day?
I don't know. Tim, does it, I don't know that it really talks about that. I view unrestricted as, you know, you have a budget of, let's say, a million, and you've got cash and revenues to fund that of 1.5 million. So your surplus, or the DLGF calls it operating balance, is 500,000. I think that's the number you're looking for. And where the games could be played is folks increasing their budgets that they're not going to spend, just my observation, after 32 years of doing this.
Reason to ask is because if it's fire EMS, do they take some of the money from the city to help the township fire department?
No. I think that's where the county could come in again, just like with the school.
So the county with their excess can help fund that.
Remember, though, there's a 0.2% that's available to all other units of government. Townships are part of that.
Okay.
One other thing I would be remiss of not saying is, a lot of us feel that one of the big pushes in the future is going to be like mergers and stuff like that of smaller units. I don't know if any of you are around for Shepard Kernan early on in the Daniels days, but I think some of that stuff will come back. So be ready.
And then the police department does, is just out of the general fund then, instead of having its own, the way this is...
Well, they're primarily funded out of property taxes already, but it would eliminate the public safety LIT structure that is utilized for her pensions and, yeah, and the construction loan over there on the new station. Any other immediate questions? It's a lot to digest. We'll make sure to get these materials to council members, and we'll continue working with, we've engaged REEDY Financial to assist us in navigating the choppy waters ahead.
Well, I'm curious about the, the LIT has to be passed every year. What do you think the over/under is for them to change that? I mean, if you settle LIT, then every year you have to go through the process of reestablishing it. And then if, if the, you know, council changes, we... And then if, if the, you know, council changes, we see different faces from time to time.
Couple of things on that. So on the property tax side, there's an interesting part to the statute that says, you know, if you go through your budget, and there's lots of folks out there, folks meaning, you know, counties, cities, folks that levy a tax. They can mess up their advertisement, they can adopt inappropriately, they can have wrong financial information on a budget form, and the state will actually zero out their budget for that, for the funds. But on the property tax side, what the cure is, is they'll give you the prior year. So they won't zero out your property tax, but they'll give you, you know, the current year for the following year. There's no such provision for, you know, Senate Enrolled Act on the income tax side. So that would certainly make sense, and we didn't talk about that today during the task force. So that would certainly make sense. There's another issue out there, and that's with debt. There's a lot of communities, I don't know if Huntington's one of them, that issues income tax bonds. But if you issue income tax bonds, and remember this restricts it to twenty-five percent of the lit, and you have to come back every year, bondholders aren't going to like that. That's not good security. So we're working through issues with the big Indianapolis law firms and things like that to get those issues resolved. What we're looking at is a technical correction next year through the, the DLGF always has a bill that corrects certain things. We were hoping that maybe they would come out already, but they didn't. So there's lots of important things that need to be addressed next year.
So we've got to work through county council to assure that whatever lit we get, we need to be good friends with them and say, okay, we're going to need our max lit or whatever.
They control the point four percent.
Right.
As you control the one point two percent for the city. The point four percent will be vital.
Yeah.
You guys are going to need that. And, you know, you talked about the over-under, I don't know, on that stuff. I hope we get lots of good changes, but I'm not going to bet on it, but I hope.
So in summary, the Indiana, this is a question kind of, but probably also an editorial comment. Did the Indiana General Assembly intend to create turmoil in local taxing units and set them possibly in conflict with one another, all in the name of reducing property tax? Or is that just a side effect because they wanted to grandstand?
There's a certain person in office that wanted this. And then there's a certain person in the General Assembly who's getting ready to retire that helped write the bill, that's wanted this for decades. And in my opinion, looking at this, this is just a legacy for those two people is kind of how I view it.
Okay.
The circuit breaker, when it was passed, it was passed during a special session in two thousand eight, it was in December. And it was wide out in the open. You could see everything that was happening. I didn't like it at the time, but at least you could see it. This one, never saw it. This one began as House Bill one zero zero one, and it had full personal property elimination, and it was really bad on the impacts to units of government. And then magically, you know, a month before the session got over, boom, Senate Bill one was just dropped on our laps. It was very late in the game. So.
Yeah.
So numbers-wise, basically, the state said, we're going to reduce your property taxes for certain people's egos, but they took more money from the cities to keep more money for the states so they can do whatever they want with it.
The one person that Representative Thompson has said that counties will be, I mean, he said this during open meetings, basically kingmakers, was his comments during. So he's the chairman of House Ways and Means, but he sat on the floor as a witness. And he was making, and that's when he would say, you know, we've got two years to fix it and things like that. But, you know, he's from Hendrix County, from the Danville area.
Representative Thompson was also the gentleman assuring the other caucus members that there was a firewall between the three percent, two percent, one percent property tax rates that would prevent the cuts in three percent from impacting two and one percent. Not a thing.
But as the mayor said, we're here to help and advise and offer comment, and we work with folks like you all around the state, and we'll share with you what we learn in the coming weeks and months.
I appreciate your thoroughness in going by parcel and giving us numbers that are significant.
I appreciate you making it understandable for regular people. So thank you very much.
Good.
Because I'm not an accountant. Flunked all those classes in college. Just saying.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tim. Again, council members, you'll receive a copy of the presentation here so we can continue digesting it. It is something that we all take very seriously, and even as we continue to lobby for improvements and changes with it, we will go forward with the mindset of the worst-case scenario and plan accordingly. And so please do bear in mind, especially as we move to our next item on the agenda here, that when we're bringing you projects or looking at investments or expenditures, we're bringing it to you because, one, we think it's vital and it's important and worthwhile for us to do as a city, but also as we've crunched and worked through numbers, we think it's something that's manageable even as we anticipate the uncertainty that's ahead of us. So with that, we'll move along to the fire station update. I've got, I want to invite Chief Johnson and Director Cuttrus just to update a little bit on the, well, Chief Johnson apparently, I think Director Cuttrus had to step out. Oh, thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tim. Safe travels. So Chief's going to share a little bit on the updated construction timeline. Now, I do have to eat a bit of crow here for the council. We thought we would be bringing you this question later in the year, but as we've engaged with YGAND and they've looked at the proposal, and during the presentations even, there was recommendations that were made to bump up the construction timeline. And so this isn't the way I like to operate, but we're trying to keep you informed as we continue to finalize the plan on it. And so we've got an update on that timeline, and then we'll talk about the implications for it. So Chief, Adam?
So basically, when we chose YGAND, our construction managers, I think we've already talked to you guys about that, that they saw some significant savings to the city if we could start. And it's basically to get through those winter months, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, Adam, get through those winter months and they could get the, a lot of the site work done before they start getting the bid. So they have actually at the point right now where they're starting to get, they're going to break this up, let me back up, they're going to break this up to two different bid processes. First one's going to be site work and concrete work. They can get the foundation, the site work done, the foundation work done. And then, so they're getting this one out now, they've got it ready. It's going out actually, it's going out, hasn't it? So it'll be out for bid. So this will be the first phase, and while this is going through, our architect is working on the rest of the project to get it ready for bid out. So it'll actually be two bid processes with this to get us started early. We will, the bid will be out for a couple of weeks. I think until the end of the month, and then we're going to, bids will need to be back in, and we're going to be, the bids at the end of the month then, or getting the bids in at the end of the month. So that puts us in a timeline of probably breaking ground, probably that last week of August, if we go with this, go with this bids that we're doing now and get this process going. But that, it's going to save us money, and it's going to give us a quicker move-in time. I think they've got us right now moving in November of next year.
Questions on the change in the timeline?
They said it saved money, yes.
Correct. It's all going to be managed through YGAND. They're the construction managers on this. The way a CMC project like this works is YGAND is allowed to, under the state law, YGAND is allowed to self-perform up to thirty percent of the overall construction on the project. They then will sub out the remainder of the work. YGAND will be the chief constructor, the manager of the whole site. They will then have subs doing a lot of the other work. So what they're doing, this bid process, is YGAND bidding out, essentially soliciting subcontractors for specific pieces of the project. So this first phase is the site work, that being underground utilities, footers, foundation, the very base pad of the building, and that kind of thing. And then there'll be, in about a month and a half or so, there will be then the remainder of the bid packages, which is the rest of the building, the interior walls, the finishes, the roof, all the masonry, flooring, all of that kind of stuff. So there'll be a bunch more bid packages to come later. This first one is just basically the groundwork and the concrete.
So council members, we will be bringing more information back to you at the next council meeting, but generally, as things are taking shape, the strategy on the way forward, we already alluded to this, I believe, in previous conversation, but we would be looking to do two to three million dollars from general fund, from cash on hand towards the project. We'd be looking to issue bonds through the RDC in partnership with the RDC for the remainder of that. But part of this also would involve paying off the one point four million remaining on the mortgage note for River Fork West, which would free up cash flows for serving the bond on this. There's still fine tuning that's needed on the numbers to make sure that we don't restrict things too much in terms of our growth and development at River Fork West, but we, I anticipate having a firm plan for you at the next meeting and an action step for you. The bonds will take time to close over the course of this fall, so that action step will most likely be an appropriation of cash on hand to begin the project until the bonds kick in to carry it through. And so, again, like I said, I apologize for bringing it to you this way because it's not how I like to operate, but we will get you the information and fine tune everything before it appears on your desk next time. But this is the update for you on the timeline, and we do think it's worthwhile to get it going. So any further questions, comments, concerns from council members? Okay. That then is our motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion in second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.